Call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. And we're going to begin. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next thing I'd like to do is an approval of the agenda. Does someone have, would you like to make a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
All right, next second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, any changes, anything?
Only, only thing I would add, and it's not a huge change, we had sent two B&amp;G things today. If folks are comfortable doing those under Buildings and Grounds later in the agenda, that was the Shrewsbury Heating and the Wallingford Outbuilding.
Yeah, okay.
We also have to add the superintendent.
Uh, I think, because there's action in that number.
Hiring update.
Six.
Yeah.
In that hiring update, there's action there?
Got it.
I think that covers it, right?
No, but good, good check.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor? Hope we're all here, right? Was there only up there?
Uh, nobody up there, yeah.
Excellent. Okay, so the next thing is public input announcement. So, we have a lot of people, everybody can have at least, you get three minutes of talking, and then, because I'm assuming, are we all gonna make statements, or are we just here for support?
There's a question.
It doesn't matter if you, I mean, like, it doesn't really matter, it's just thinking of how, of time-wise.
There's a few of us.
Yeah, that's fine. So, you get at least three minutes, and then just, we'll just be respectful of everybody's time for that, okay? So, and then, I don't know if we, how, what order anybody wants to speak in, do you want to just do it on who's, how we did the sign-in sheet, Brian?
Sure.
Did that work?
Sure.
Did that work for everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Gary, do you want to speak?
Sure. My name is Gary Flanders. I'm a Wallingford resident. I'm a retired 27-year employee of Wallingford School District, and I'm a concerned citizen. I'm here again tonight to ask the, to have the lock removed from the gate on the west fence of the WES playground, and to correct some statements made by others at the previous meeting. It was stated that to exit the playground, children could just run to the north approximately 100 feet from the gate and go around the fence, which is not true. I went to the school on Monday to verify the statement, because I believed it to be untrue, and found that you could not get around the gate to escape the playground. It appears that the statement was used to minimize my concerns and to convince people that the locked gate is not a safety issue, because there was another way to get off the playground. Page two. And I didn't bring this to anybody's attention to make anyone look bad, but I just think that it's important that everybody has the correct facts before you make a decision on whether we're going to unlock that gate like I want to see it unlocked. We were also informed that the gate is not written into a safety or an evacuation plan for the Wallingford Elementary School, but I believe that if it's not written into an evacuation or a safety plan, the plan is seriously flawed. To have a, why would anybody plan to limit the choices for children to get out from the playground in out-of-arms-way in an emergency situation? Definitely should be written into a plan if it's not in there. I know from writing those plans, sometimes you overlook things. Sometimes, you know, with a lot of people looking at it, maybe they didn't mention the gate. I know that the last time, we had the discussion about whether it was an egress gate or not. Well, it's a gate, it's a gate. For 45 years, or, so, it's been a gate there, there's been unlocked, and now, all of a sudden, because one administrator had made a, I think, a bad decision to allow a neighbor to lock it, I think now, that's why we're looking at the situation we're looking at now. I received numerous calls in support of removing the locks after people saw the big TV segment that we had on there. And, in fact, one person even sent me a document, document that they had gone to the town hall to get, to show that where the gate was located, the Wallingford School District had an easement in a right-of-way through the neighbor's property that doesn't want the gate unlocked. So, I mean, I just, I just for no reason can understand why we would keep that locked gate. If at any time, if we were to do, was even Gray recommended, unlock that lock, that gate like it should be, and put a, for emergency use only, the only time the neighbor would ever see a student from the elementary school standing in their backyard would be if something really, really bad had gone on, on the school side of that fence. That means it's an emergency, that's why the person's over there. If a person happened to, during the school day, a child for some reason happened to go through that fence and go onto this person's back lawn, well, very simple solution that would be is to call the school and say, "You've got a student on my back lawn," and I'm sure whoever the administration, administrator was, would take care of that problem. So, like I said, I still am in full support of removing that lock, and I would, hopefully that you people would feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we're gonna just add, for people who aren't, so we'll, we're gonna, everybody's gonna get to talk, and then we have a small section where we can respond, but we still, we don't take action or do anything in that period of time. And for those folks that are staying too, one of the hardest things is after the public comment, is then, we kind of have to just be aboard after that. I know that's tricky. So, now, do you, let's just go down the list.
Preston, do you want to speak?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Preston Flanders, and I'm a senior.
Laura Honey.
Oh, sorry. I am a senior at Mill River and Stafford Technical Center, and with being a senior, I was asked to submit a senior photo. For the last month, I have wondered what rule I broke when submitting my photo. So far, the answer is none. Yeah, I was asked to submit a new one. I'm just hoping that the board can answer that question.
Tanya Flanders?
So, I'm Preston's mom, Tanya Flanders. I've come here tonight to speak on his behalf. For a school that claims to be welcoming and preaches equity and equality and inclusiveness, none of that's happening. Preston hasn't broken any rules or violated any policies with the submission of a senior photo. He is posed with a firearm, not a weapon, that he is holding in a respectful manner in a proper direction with no finger on the trigger and unloaded. Preston is extremely passionate about hunting and shooting sports, but because today's society says firearms are bad, he automatically doesn't get the same respect as everyone else. Senior pictures are supposed to support, supposed to be about displaying your passions and interests. I guess my question to you is, why is it okay for other people to display items that relate to their passions, when Preston is told no?
So, I'm Aleah, I am speaking on behalf of Preston, he's my brother. Um, first off, I don't see anything wrong with this photo whatsoever. I see my brother showing what he enjoys to do in hunting and shooting sports. So, for anyone to call it a weapon is just wrong. And, he's holding a firearm, which is not a weapon, because the definition of a weapon is a thing designed or used for inflicting bodily harm or physical damage. So, following that, anything can be a weapon. For example, a baseball bat, golf club, scissors, a car, and gosh, so, so much more. Some examples I have are on July 9, 2005, a case on a high school boy who was found guilty of a second-degree murder for killing a 15-year-old boy with a bat after a game. Another one I found is a 13-year-old classmate stabbed a other 13-year-old classmate with scissors in the classroom after they got into an argument. So, beyond those stories and examples I have, I still question why you guys are not letting him submit his senior photo, and letting everybody submit theirs with their passion.
Mr. Flanders?
My mom has asked me to read hers, I'm her behalf.
Yeah, that's fine. Is that Michaela?
No, Starlene.
Okay.
Yep, I think.
We're just going in order.
Yep.
And if you all agree to go in a different order, that's fine. Does Michaela want to? Nope, okay, fair. I think I've got, oh, Mr. Giati, John. Nope, okay, fair. Steven Flanders?
I'm good.
Okay, fair enough. Morey?
You good?
I'm good.
Okay. Yep, so, Starlene, next.
Okay, so I'm writing to express my support for my grandson. As a 35-year resident of East Wallingford, I have raised and put two daughters through the Mill River School Districts. Senior photos are cherished memories, a time capsule to express one's passion for their current lifestyles. I am confused as to why he is being denied the use of the senior photograph, when he has not broken any rules or guidelines. If someone could please explain this to me and my grandson, that would be greatly appreciated. If not, I would urge you to allow him to use the picture.
Rita?
I'm going to say.
Norman?
Yes. The question is my grandson. If you can pull past yearbooks, and I do know for a fact that my two sons have pictures of an axe and halogen tools from the fire department. You have no policy, no guideline for your students to reflect to, to make a choice of what kind of picture they can use. That's an area that needs to be concern, of concern, that you need to direct and go forward with, okay? Somebody has made a choice based on something that apparently has rubbed them the wrong way, not based upon any black-and-white documentation by the Mill River School District, that they can defiantly go to him, mom, or dad, or the school board and say, "He violated this policy." There is no policy. That needs to be taken care of after this is done. Move forward from this. Let the kid use his, his photo, okay? I'm gonna give you a little insight about something. I carried a guy out of the woods when I was 14-years-old that was shot, okay? By stupidity. My grandson's been through hunter-safety. I took my kids out when they were three, four-years-old, and took a pistol, and took a watermelon, and said, "That's your friend. I'm gonna show you what happens when you or your friend uses a gun stupidly. Your friend's not coming back." And if you've never carried anybody out of the woods screaming, you don't understand what I went through. You've never seen the torment. That photo is not hurting anybody. It's showing what this kid likes to do. He likes to hunt, he likes to shoot. Okay? I've shot with him. I have no problem. I know how he handles a weapon. But until you have a black-and-white policy to fall back on, how can somebody take it upon themselves to say, "We can't do this, you can't do that, find another picture?" Now, I could jump in a lot of other areas, but I'm not going. I'm just asking that, you look at this, realize you don't have a policy. If he really wanted to be a stippler about it, he could say, "You know what? I'm being harassed." Okay? We don't need Mill River's name in the paper, we don't need none of that crap. Let's just move forward. Look at what's happened now, establish a policy, so that in the future, everything's black-and-white when they, you go to your 12th-grade students and say, "You can give us a photo, but here's your guideline. This is what we will and will not accept." That's all I'm asking. Okay? Take that into consideration. Thank you.
Nick?
Yeah. So, as everyone in this room should know, I'm Nick Flanders. I live in Wallingford. I graduated class of 2000 from Mill River. I have three children that attend Mill River. I have another eight nieces and nephews that go to the district. The question I have for the group tonight is, what if a teacher were to assign their class a homework assignment, an essay? Give me an essay by the end of the week. The students joyfully take the assignment, return the assignment, and say, "Here's my essay." The following day, she comes back, and I'm sorry, I cannot accept this homework that you've done. It is all wrong. I wish that you had done the homework on American Western Expansion. Your essays are all denied. This is essentially what has happened to my son. He was given an assignment, and I quote, "Upload your senior picture and attach your work here and mark done." Please take this into consideration. Thank you.
Is that everybody?
End of the list.
To make a public comment?
Katja, if you want to say anything?
No, I'm, thank you.
I don't think we have public online, I think we just have staff. But if anybody online wants to talk, shout.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate it, having the people come in and talk to us. So now, we move on to board discussion of public comments, and this is gonna be at most 10 minutes, okay? So, does anyone have any comments that they would like to respond to, or any?
I'd like to respond to, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name, sir.
Gary.
Gary, Gary's comments. I actually, we went and drove by the elementary school after the last debate about that gate, and it just reinforced in my mind that Gary is correct, because it's, it's not open along, in that interface between the houses along Seven, in the back of the elementary school. There's a lot of trees and bushes, and there is a clear shot from that gate, straight out, and I know whose house that is, straight out the driveway to Seven, that really is a pretty logical egress path. And, I think that, you know, you might even be worried if it was a high school, high school students not, present company excepted, of course, might not necessarily be respectful of a simple sign that says, "Emergency use only." But I'm pretty sure that elementary students would follow that dictum, and that gate could be safely left unlocked, and ought to be. So, my two cents with it.
I have, actually, also, about the gate, who owns that fence? Who put that fence up? The school, right?
We did. Yeah, the school put up the fence.
Just a reminder, we have dedicated time on the agenda later to have.
Yeah, we have.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, because we're gonna do that during the Buildings and Grounds, but that's fine, I'm in the comments. Does anybody else have any other comments for the discussion?
Well, I'll go again.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't have it in front of me, but I have, we saw it in our debate about Preston's photograph, the written rules about school art. That is effectively the policy for all the students about what kind of art is acceptable.
Not policy.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm using the root, but I mean, it's, call it guidelines, rules?
Guidelines.
Guidelines.
Probably safer, yeah.
Okay. And, I mean, the very first item at the top of that list is, in capital letters, "No guns." So, I know a lot of folks have talked about how there was no, there was lack of guidance on what could be or could not be included in school photographs, but that seemed pretty clear to me. So.
Well, I can tell a personal story about when my daughter went to Mill River, and she was in an art class, drawing one, and I don't know if they do this anymore, but they would do weekly drawings. And, if you got a five, you got it displayed. Do they still do that, or no? Anybody know? Anyway, you would get a one to five for your weekly drawing, and it was based on how much time and you put into it and everything. And one week, she drew a handgun. Lot of detail, perfect gun. And the art teacher looked at it, gave her five points, and said, "But we can't display it." Okay? So, in my mind, it's sort of, it has been the tradition to not display guns in artwork. And that's, that's my history with it. I'd like to say something. Would you, would, would people like to see the guidelines that were made available to students for their school art? Because we have them here.
For school art or school photographs?
Well, I mean, for school.
Photography is.
It's, that's sort of splitting hairs. For stuff that students.
Not splitting hairs, because the artwork was not.
I'm just curious, would anybody like to see it?
Was not presented when you submitted the photo.
Okay. Would anybody like to see it, though? Would that be helpful?
I'm trying to figure out how you're tying that.
I'm so, I'm, I'm sorry, this is the tricky part, and we want to have a, like, we want to have a conversation, but it's, we, we can't, because it, it'll, it's how the rules work, how we set up how these rules work, I'm, I'm really sorry.
Well, it's just available if anybody would like to look at it.
I think the other, just, sorry, Kim, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Um, I think, part of, I mean, part of my problem with that particular argument is that I think there's probably other things that could have been submitted that you would be uncomfortable with, having them shown, as well, but there wouldn't be a rule that said they, they wouldn't be.
Exactly. Which means we need to create the rules.
Right, well, there, there is guidance, right?
There is no guidance. The rules.
Right.
And I'm going to read them to you again, because you missed it. This is exactly what was presented to the students.
I understand.
Upload your senior picture and attach as done.
But, the, the difference is, is the, is the yearbook separate from the school community? Would you say that the yearbook is separate from the school community? So, like, the handbook wouldn't apply, so like, the policies within the school.
Is it in the handbook?
Well, there is a dress code in the handbook.
So.
And in the dress codes, it explicitly says.
Do not wear.
Correct.
Is he wearing it?
So, you think that it would be in a, so we have a rule that says you can't wear something, and you think that not wearing it would make that okay? We have a rule that says you can't wear it, but you can bear it. There, you, that's enough of a distinction?
So, again, if I can come in with an axe, and I can show you.
Right.
A yearbook picture, every single year.
Yeah.
And you're going to say that that is not a weapon?
Well, I would say, in the particular picture with the axe.
So now you're splitting hairs.
No, but see, this is what I would like to actually talk about, because there always has to be a line, correct?
Correct.
So, in the context of that picture, right, there's, in fire gear, in front of a fire truck.
No.
Yeah.
And at least one of them.
In one, I will give you one.
Right, yeah. The other, I mean, so.
I have looked at the last 20 years of.
Oh, yeah, I looked at every single one, because the Rutland Historical Society has a, has a button, right? So.
I can guarantee you, we're not going to see eye to eye on this.
Oh, I know, we aren't, but that's okay, that's, that's fine.
And I have already, I have already had discussions with legal counsel.
Yeah, that's fine. But I.
So, how far would you like to push the envelope?
I think that that's not really our, that's not our job right now, actually.
Agrees. This is public discussion, so how far before we hit our 10 minutes?
I think we're actually quite there, because it's 23 now. I'm fine with moving on, if we want to.
Would anyone else like to have a discussion?
I think not. Okay.
Next topic.
All right, let's move on. So, the next thing is approval of the minutes, 12-4-24. All right, so can I have an approval, a motion for the approval of the minutes from 12-4-24? I'll make a motion. Of to approve the minutes. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second it.
Okay, so we have any discussion? See, none. All those in favor of seconding the minutes? All right.
One, I'll abstain.
Yeah, we're saying, okay, great. Okay, so the next thing is six, superintendent hiring update.
You're online.
Hi, I guess that's me.
Yeah.
I believe board members receive the contract from the Vermont School Boards Association, which we, as a board, need to approve before we move forward into utilizing the School Board Association to help us fill the position. There's a lot to it, and, and I can only speak to what happened the last time we had superintendent search, and the School Board Association was very helpful in helping us, because there's a lot of stuff that they do that I don't think, in my opinion, I certainly wouldn't want to do, and I don't think any board member would like to be involved with. They have connections, and help, will help us do the search, plain and simple. I think that a couple of things that are kind of critical. Number one is, the fee is $12,000, which I will say is more expensive than it was the last time. But nonetheless, I, I think, if you've taken the time to look at what they will provide, I think it would be benef, I think it's beneficial. Because I don't think it's anything that, that anyone, and I'm not disparaging any board member, but it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. So, you know, the, the other point I'll make, which I also think is important, because I think it's a reflection of things, is there's a reimbursing search consultants for ancillary expenses. And, I say this to only further my little agenda. All of the folks who are aiding in the superintendent searches are from up north, north of Middlebury. And that's the way it has been for quite some time. Nothing we can do about that, but it, but it does impact, if, if someone has to come down here and spend time with us, and meet with us, that we may have to pay for their transportation, and their housing, and their meals. So, that's an added expense, and I just think it's important that folks understand that. And again, it comes about as a result of north and south, but anyways.
And was that, did, did that occur in the last superintendent search?
No.
Those things?
It did not, because the person that was involved in the search was from down in this area.
Okay.
And, and evidently now, there is no one available down in this area to help with that hands-on search part. The School Board Association just completed two superintendent searches, one in Rutland, and one, was the second one that just happened?
Was it Rutland Northeast, or somewhere else, that just finished?
It was Rutland City.
Yeah.
And Rutland Northeast, I think those.
Is it somebody in the region?
Pardon?
Is it somebody near us? Do you know that?
No.
Okay.
No.
I would guess northeast.
Yeah. So, that, both of those searches were conducted by the Vermont School Board Association.
So, they did that, that same route?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, please.
Because this is my first time with any of this. Where is that money, where does it come from, from the budget? And then, is there an option at this point, too, for a lot of this to be, a lot of the consulting to happen virtually, to cut down on some of the travel?
Yes, we can, and, and we've done that, the, the virtual consulting, we have done, we did that the last time. In, in terms of doing things virtually, yes, we can probably do that.
I understand that probably not all of it, I just was curious if that is.
Yeah, I think we can. I mean, we've been in contact with the person already, just in terms of setting this up so they would send us the contract. Now, the key is. in terms of setting this up, so they would send us the contract. Now, the key is, we have to accept this contract, and the $12,000 cost, which doesn't matter how much we do virtually or not.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So, Ryan's been here, what, two and a half years?
Two and a half.
Yeah. So was this done two years ago? Um, I'm looking at just even the organizing piece of it, developing a written charge for the screening committee that identifies specific roles and responsibilities current. I mean, don't, so don't we already have that? You know, I mean.
Is some of it.
Yeah, from the last time.
Yeah, and would, would there be a whole lot of change to that in two, two years, two and a half years?
Yes, I'd say good luck. Who has it? Probably the consultant.
But you paid for it, so.
No, yes, we did. And, and you're correct.
I mean, I did the math, and it's 80 hours of time, is, is what they're saying it would take. And I'm, I guess I'm a little skeptical of the 80 hours of the consultant's time. I think it'll take time for a screening committee. I think it'll take time, um, it, you know, for that, for, for finance, to come up with a salary range, all of that. I think it'll take a lot of time for the board. I don't see where the consultant will take 80 hours. But maybe, you know, I mean, I've done three superintendent searches, and, um, I just don't see it, I guess, as well, you know. And I, no disrespect, but I mean, you know, we did it last time, and we got Brian.
Was the consultant largely with you in a lot of the early sessions?
Yes.
So then, you know, I, I hear you, the background work is one thing, but I think that person logs a lot of hours meeting with the group, too.
Right.
So, I don't know, maybe 10, 10 of those hours might be just meetings.
Right. They will set up a site on School Spring, and they also have a couple of other websites that they will, um, publish the, the job listing. Um, so it's not just on School Spring. Um.
I mean, I, I'm just putting it out there that it seems like 80 hours of consulting seems like a lot, that's all. And I don't know if, um, a per diem might be a better way to write the contract.
But they will do that. This is it.
Yeah.
Let, let, let me be clear. Okay, they're not going to negotiate. They, they've sent us this contract, and we either accept it or reject it, plain and simple.
Oh, I was just going to say, um, it seems like the, the expenses portion of this could really be a black hole. You know, if you think about what a hotel room costs, and three meals a day, you're, that's 200 bucks right off the bat.
Yeah.
So if that happens 10 times.
And, and I agree. I, I don't think it will. Uh, the amount, they, they put that in because, and, and that wasn't there the last time we did this, um, because we did more, um, virtually kind of thing. Um, so that, that's a new addition. And.
So I'm not trying to put you on the spot when you say that it, this is it, but what if we drew a line through that and sent it back and said, this is what we'd like? Because I think if we're paying them 12 grand, that, that ought to include at least some of that in-person stuff. But, and I mean, you know more than I do, if that's just not possible.
And I don't know. As I say, this, that, that addendum is new. It was not there last year.
So that at least gives you a, a leg to stand on to say, oh, hang on a sec, this is a change.
Well, based, again, the, the reason, and I'm just going by the phone conversation I had, the reason they added that was because the only consultants they have are from up north. They don't have a person from Rutland. They don't have a person from Polley. They don't have a person from Middlebury. They're all farther north.
So what, is it possible for us to locate a consultant down here who could do this work?
There isn't one.
No.
Somebody not associated with the SBA.
Not associated with them. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't know.
I don't either.
I mean, I have a name in my head of someone who helped us with one of our searches.
But my, my, okay, and, and it's very difficult for me to sit here and defend the Vermont School Board.
And I'm not asking.
You're in a hot seat, Len.
No.
I know, I'm not asking you too many. I understand.
Yeah, Nick, go ahead.
Nick? Uh, again, this isn't negotiable, right? They, they're saying, take this or leave this. But I don't see where, in the terms, it says that they actually have to be here. Can we do it virtually?
That's what we have done in the past.
That at least gets rid of the room and board and travel, and all of a sudden, it's instant. They call you, you call me.
You pay them also of travel. You pay them for mileage plus their time.
Right.
And we'd want to change the contract then before, you know, say, on that, under the fourth, the fees and payment schedule, to re, to send it back to them under C. Sorry.
I got it.
Yeah. Maybe we just say, you know, we agree to complete as much of this virtually as possible, if and when there was like a need, you know, to be in person kind of thing.
I mean, we pretty much, we're set up for hybrid.
Just a clarification on the charges, too. If somebody were to come down, obviously, we pay mileage, meals, potentially lodging. But are we also paying additional amount for their hours?
You pay for their travel time.
That's not.
No, their, their, their hours are part of the 12,000, at least how.
Right, well, okay, that's, that's what would make sense to me. Because, I mean, we talked about up north, well, I mean, Burlington's not that far away. You know, you can come down here and do business and go back on the same day. It is doable.
And again, I'm kind of reading this on the fly. It does say that travel will be discounted at a rate of 50%. But it's still crazy.
Yeah, but if you have somebody come down, and really, basically, all you're doing is paying mileage, and maybe a, a lunch in the school cafeteria.
Be like, you can come down and enjoy our school.
Let's do it virtually.
I don't know. Yeah, I, it took me aback. The, the amount seemed, yeah, like a lot.
Seems there is precedent, Len, you're saying, for doing at least most of this virtually?
Well, like, the last time was just, everyone was doing everything virtually.
Right.
Oh, because of the pandemic?
Yeah, so like, the last time, it just was like, a matter of fact, that that was just how.
That's how it was going to be.
It was assumed.
So it wasn't an option. And then there were certain times, like, when we did interviews, like, they would, they would be here for those periods of time. Yeah. And so it's like that, you know, I don't know how much that is worth.
Yeah, I, I don't, again, I sat on three, we didn't have an outside person there. We had board members, community members, parents, teachers.
Right, right. Usually, the folks from the Vermont, the person from the Vermont School Board Association does not participate in the actual interviews.
I know. Are you saying they did last time?
They, they were. No, they didn't.
They were, they were part of the actual, like, interview process.
Right.
Okay, I misunderstood.
They were just like, there to be, like, the organizing.
They helped us set it up.
And then, like, in between interviews, they were there, we would ask them questions and things like that.
Yeah.
I wasn't here for any of the beginning part, though. So I don't know.
I mean, we can request that they just come to interviews virtually, right? They're going to demand to be here in person.
Yeah, I guess. But they don't necessarily have, by the contract, they wouldn't have, they could just come, if you'd like. But.
I mean, I think the problem is, there's really nobody here who can take the lead on this. I think we have to hire an outside consultant. I mean, that's the reality of a volunteer board. And there's, you know, nobody can devote the time to this that needs to be devoted to it. So I don't think we have any choice. Maybe we could, and that seems to me, does anybody see an alternative? I don't.
Right. I think there, there is no, yeah, the, we definitely are not, not having a consultant. Right.
Can I throw one thing in?
Yeah.
Um, as you look at these documents, I would say, keep in mind that one is a contract, and that I, bullet four, C, none of that is in the contract. The document that Len is talking about are considerations.
Right.
So you can, you can come up with how you want to negotiate travel reimbursement, accommodations, and meals, and that stuff.
I, I, we can do that outside of the contract.
So you could say to somebody, hey, you know, we'll give you mileage, but we're not putting you up in a hotel.
Right.
You know, you, you can get back at a reasonable hour. So, um, I, I think what I'm hearing more people discuss right now is that it's the reimbursement pieces that.
Addendum.
Yeah. You, you have some time, and you can probably hash that out, and come up with something that's mutually agreeable. But, so if that's what's hanging people up, that's not what we need to make a decision on tonight. Fair? Sorry for interrupting.
Well, no, that's a good clarification.
Yeah.
And at the bottom of that, there is a, the stipulation that says, you know, it will not exceed 2,500 without prior approval by the board.
Because it can't. You, you, we can't spend money over 2,500 without board approval. So it can't, or else we're in trouble.
Right, I just have, still have that question about, like, is there, um, a, a line in the budget that just is kind of always there for things like this?
The board has funding. So there are some things, like, Carol was asking earlier in the year, go into the Vermont School Boards Association Conference in the fall. We have funding set aside for that. Nobody accessed that this fall. So there is some funding there. I don't know exactly how much, but you've got a couple thousand dollars, most likely. Probably not 12,000, maybe 5,000. Um.
So we couldn't pay ourselves $12,000 to, to do it, be our own consultant?
There is some funding at the board, uh, in the board's, uh, section of the budget. Yes, thank you. So, and we would find the difference somewhere where we've got surplus, and we'd ask the board to move that surplus into the boards.
Heck, we just got paid, so.
Yep.
So.
The board stipends, yep.
Actually, funding the agreement would not pose a big challenge.
No, because you're, you're maybe talking about 9,000 to 5,000 that we're trying to find in surplus, which I think is incredibly difficult.
Okay. Thanks, folks, for coming. Appreciate it. Sorry to bore you with this.
It only gets more boring.
It's downhill from here.
So I'm going to make a motion that we accept a contract as provided by the Vermont School Boards Association to aid us in the superintendent search agreement.
I'll second it.
So, just this part. Well, now we can have a discussion about, about the actual contract. Do we want to talk about it? So are we, do you, is there any more talking that we want to do? So are we going to accept the contract? So.
That's where we're at.
Right. So does in, the, the discussion would be, would, does anyone want to make an attempt to edit any of this contract?
This contract.
Once you do that, the process of doing the contract takes a lot longer. And then the process of getting superintendent takes a lot longer.
Yeah, that's the thing. It's like, they kind of have us over the barrel, and I'm not comfortable with it, but I don't see an alternative, based on what, you know, I mean, yes, I understand we don't really have, um, the personnel to, to really do it. I just, the thing that concerns me is that it's $12,000, whether they do 80 hours or not.
Yeah.
And I've written a lot of contracts like that, and you never win on that, honestly, because I just, I would love to know the breakdown of where they see 80 hours of the work.
Well, and, and, and part of it, I think, is, it, it used to be, again, when we did it in the past, they weren't paying the consultants, and I can say this, because I was one of them at one time, they weren't paying them much to do this consulting work. And now I think they're paying them more. And I don't know that.
Well, it says 150 an hour, so.
I, I think, well, I'm, I'm done thinking, so.
Yeah, no, I know.
Well, I guess the question would be, what's the alternative?
Yeah, there, I, I.
Somebody here runs the show.
Well, it doesn't have to be, I mean, I was, I don't want to say the person's name, but we used somebody who was, you know, a snelling, uh, participant, who was a superintendent. And we, we did pay that person, and they did all the background checks. They did help write the, um, the charge for the committee. Um, I feel like if we just did that two years ago, that an update, I don't see where they're going to have to go into depth as much as they describe in their contract, in terms of coming up with that. I might be wrong. I wasn't involved in the last superintendent search, but.
They, they did a ton of work.
Exactly. So why can't we use that work if we already, I don't want to belabor it.
Do you have it?
I mean, that's just how my brain works. Well, I would hope.
I think so, like, really, the only other person, so, I don't, my, you know, obviously none of us have it, right? It's definitely not in, the only person that may have it is.
Whoever the consultant was.
Well, the con.
Right. And it's not the same consultant.
And it's not the same consultant. And I don't think we would have any, because, you know, it's part of the deal, is, you know, they keep the information, right? You know, that's the annoying part.
I mean, I was involved in it. I don't have a, I mean, could I go back into my emails and stuff? I don't know.
And who was the board chair at that time?
BJ.
BJ.
BJ was at that time. So BJ would be the only other person, I would imagine, that would have that information.
Well, I know we have to get this going, so, um, otherwise, I would say, let's table it and, you know, but I see the problems with that as well.
As we know, the, you are, we are up against a timeframe, is the reality of that. And, you know, there's only a certain amount of pool that exists for that, that can fill this position.
Right.
And so the, the sooner we can start, the wider that net gets to be.
Right.
But, you know, if, if there's enough people who are uncomfortable with going on, you can just vote no, and then we can try to find some other solution.
I do, I have a question. Is there, is there no one within the Mill River organization who's, I mean, on payroll, so they're not a volunteer, who's kind of qualified to lead a search? And I, I'm just curious. And they'd have to obviously have the time.
I think time is a big part of it. And then conflict of issue.
Having somebody in the organization is a conflict of issue.
Well, presumably, somebody who's in the organization, you know, on a pay basis, already has a full-time job. So.
Yeah, I know, you're right. Okay. I mean, that's my question.
Well, it's a fair question.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, we can just, let's just vote on it, and see where it comes out. All right, so all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Everybody, all right, great.
I just like to complain.
A healthy discuss, I mean, the reality is.
Having, having a devil's advocate is not a bad thing.
It's not.
If they come down after overnight, they can stay at our house.
What this does is provides us with the opportunity to open up, uh, speaking with them and moving forward.
Right.
And, and they won't do any of that until this contract's approved.
Do you want to authorize somebody else to sign it? On behalf of the board?
I mean, we can do that. I mean, it's.
I think we should.
Yeah, just to get it going.
So that it's done tonight.
I have a copy if you want to sign it, whoever that person.
So I would make a motion that Josh, who's acting chair, sign, um, on behalf of the board chair.
Discussion. All those in favor? I'll just stay.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, do we, do, is, are we good with that as the update? Is there any, anything else?
All I'm going to say is, let's keep all the material, in case we need it.
For sure.
So you're going to have to sign this, and then.
Oh, you printed a copy, you're closer, if you want to hand it to them.
And then, what we'll do is, I will let them know, let the School Board Association know that we've signed the contract, and we've agreed to the contract, and so we can move on. I mean, you got Christmas vacation coming up. on. I mean, you got Christmas vacation coming up. So, and I, I appreciate all the questions and concerns that people have. I really do. Here we are.
Okay. Moving on then. So guidelines for public comment.
I'll throw that up. This was a recommendation that came from Community Engagement Committee because things have shifted a little bit in how that committee is working and the language that we had on our agendas didn't quite capture that. Correct me if I'm wrong, somebody from the committee, but F is the only part that changed. I think everything else stayed the same, but F got updated to account for how those community conversations are happening a little bit differently. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So this was something that doesn't necessarily need board approval, but if I think back to when we updated that in 2021, the last time, I think the board at least looked at it to make sure everybody was comfortable with it because it goes on your agendas. So it just made sense for it to be consensus-based. So this is attached here for you to review that F item and decide if as a board you agree with that. And we'll start throwing it on agendas January if you approve it.
Yeah. So really, the only thing that's changed is that it used to say the third Monday of each month at 6:30, and that's not when it's happening. So that's really the change. It's the time.
So do we.
It's the third Wednesday at 6:00.
And, yeah, and that's been consistent. So like, I didn't know if we wanted to make it more, like, having it be that specific is still good instead of saying, I appreciate because maybe then maybe you'll see it, but if, if you take out the third Wednesday of each month beginning at 6:00 PM and just say these take place at the beginning of community engagement meetings.
Then you never have to change it.
Never have to change it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
A different committee. Yeah. Good idea.
So does somebody want to make a motion to adopt this, striking everything after the comma there?
Would you change it to say something about visit the board calendar?
For like when these, when it is occurring?
So strike that last part, something like, please see the board calendar for the next community engagement meeting?
Just, just to point out the fact that you, you can find this information.
We can, we can even, we can even link it in there.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So did we decide we need a motion or can we do it by consensus?
I mean, I don't think you really need to take action on it if you're all in agreement.
Okay.
We can get it fixed. We'll get that updated. Okay.
Okay. So the next thing is budget.
Okay. So Finance Committee met on the 12th and we actually have, I'm a little surprised I'm saying this, we actually have a good update. Things shifted a tiny bit in our favor. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to put the, those numbers up because Stan actually just got these to me late in the day. So let's find that. Okay. So all the work that the Finance Committee had done up until this point was looking at what our education funding, what our, what our increase in expenditures was looking like if we were not making any cuts to current positions. We were getting into the range of about a 3% increase in expenditure without cutting any filled positions. The Finance Committee felt like that was pretty good, especially when we were hearing from other folks in the region who were seeing more like a 5% or 6% increase. So the Finance Committee heard from some folks at the Budget Forum, heard from some folks over email, heard from some teachers when teachers came to talk, that there was a theme of trying to support our students better in math. So the Finance Committee asked us to work up a budget with two math interventionists to see what that would look like. That was looking like about a 3.3-ish percent total expenditure increase. On this updated sheet here, you can see that we're still around that 3.32 number. So that's our overall expenditure increase from last year to this year would only be 3.32%. As we look down, your next number that you see that's interesting is the 5.12. That would be the increase per student. As, as a lot of schools are seeing, we have a couple fewer students every year. And because our budget doesn't shift when we lose a handful of students, so one example would be if you have a class of 24 students and then all of a sudden you have a class of 20 students, you still need a teacher, whether you've got 24, whether you've got 20. But splitting that cost out for 20 students, it costs more per student. So that's why that student, per student spending is up 5.12%. You get down to our towns and this becomes really interesting because this is the first year that we've gotten CLA information this early in budget season. I am really surprised to see negative numbers in tax rates after projected CLA. Our update that we got just this week, yesterday, that Stan tried to work up real fast to get these most current numbers, our student numbers went up a little bit. So some of our data got corrected at the state level and our student number went up a little bit. So you can see that Clarendon is projected right now with the budget as proposed from the Finance Committee. Clarendon would see a negative 1.01% increase in taxes. You'd see Shrewsbury with a .7 decrease in their tax rate. Tinmouth with the negative 10.88 for their tax rate. You'll remember that Tinmouth the last two years has seen a very large increase. So because of those very large increases in Tinmouth, they were reassessed and, and, you know, they win the CLA lottery this year. Interesting how those swings happen. Wallingford, Wallingford you see is our only town with an increase as projected, as projected. And I'm going to talk about that a couple of times because these numbers are not anywhere near set in stone. That increase is 1.58%. If you'll recall, last year, the increases that we saw in Clarendon, Shrewsbury, Wallingford were about 4% to 7% increases. So this is looking way more favorable than it was last year, especially for our Tinmouth folks. It doesn't make up for the last two years increases in Tinmouth, but gosh, it's great to not see Tinmouth continue to increase. So a couple of, couple of quick things I'll mention about this being tentative. Our student numbers have changed once since they gave us our official number. It's likely that they'll change one more time. When we see those student number changes, they tend to get smaller. So it tends to be the big changes happen the first time they update it. And as we get closer and closer to Town Meeting Day, the changes get smaller and smaller. In other words, the state gets closer and closer to having their, their details as accurate as possible. So the last student number change was a little bit in our favor. If you remember last year, that happened too. Student numbers updated in January, a little bit in our favor. So I, that is not a set in stone number, but it's getting pretty darn close. CLA is still projected. That's the one we're the most nervous about right now because, as I said, we've never gotten CLA this early. So it is likely that sometime in January, we get a different idea of those CLA numbers. But I, I wouldn't imagine them to be too far off from the projections, but those could change. The last thing that might change, and this is the most interesting one because this one will change in the spring if it changes, that's the yield number. There is an interesting conversation happening across the state now where folks are concerned that the yield number is not quite as accurate as it has been in the past. And I know last year, we talked about the yield number being a big unknown because of that 5% cap and all of that weighted pupil change. This year, we just think it's not quite right. So there's not really a reason necessarily, but it seems, it seems off a little bit. We look at these numbers and we go, wow, that looks better than we thought it would look. That's, that's something that will get adjusted in the spring. The legislature will sit down and they will look at all the budgets that have been passed across the state and they will do a final accounting of taxes. And they will adjust the yield if they need to adjust the yield. So if these tax rates are what are projected and we pass a budget based on these tax rates, the, somebody at the state level will go and sit down and do all the math and go, okay, here are the tax dollars we're all collecting. If they get, if they do all that math for all the districts and towns in the state and they come up a little short, they're going to tell the legislature, adjust your yield number to make up for it being a little bit short. So there could be a fluctuation of maybe 2% there. It could be. You, you could see that a fluctuation of about 2% for Clarendon takes you from negative 1% to positive 1%. You can see for Wallingford, that takes you from 1.5% to 3.5%. I, I just don't want to put those numbers up there and tell you that that's what we're going to see. I think last year, we did a really good job of communicating numbers that ended up being really close. So I want to be mindful that this early in the game, we, we don't quite know yet. When it gets to February, we can probably tell you in February and be a lot closer. So when I say in February, yeah, we're probably going to see, you know, 1% in Clarendon, 3.5% in Wallingford, you'll, you'll listen to me a little bit more then than you will today because today we, we have projections and we're doing the best we can with what we have. Fair enough?
And to be clear, like, that's true every year.
Yep.
Some years have more unknowns than others.
Yeah.
Last year was unknown because they changed a lot.
And historically, you know, Josh has a really great point. Historically, for years and years and years and years and years, they were, the projections were so close that you didn't have to worry so much about it. And the numbers you put out were pretty accurate and they played out that way. Last year was crazy. This year, we thought was going to be back to, we know what's going to happen, but we've had this little bit of a last minute wrinkle where people are all kind of looking around going, ah, are your numbers a little better than you thought? Our numbers are a little better than we thought. So we, we are wondering if we're not going to come up a little short in the spring and there needs to be an adjustment. So.
One of the other points of this is we're doing this and after hearing folks request it is trying to add some math interventionists. So act like, you know, we're, we've reduced some things, but we were able to add some things that should have a direct effect on kids.
Education.
On education.
And that's a good point, Josh.
And still being able to have this kind of.
We did make some strategic cuts where we could make those cuts. You know, we're not, we're, speaking of travel expenses and consultants, we are not a district that sends administrators to some conference in, in, you know, California. We don't have thousands of dollars in our budget to, you know, send people and put them up in hotels and do that. You know, that's not something that really happens a lot here. You know, we, we've tried to cut some corners around, you know, the last several years in a way that our kids don't notice it. Because a hotel budget for me, you know, whether I have that or not, our kids don't notice that. So why do we need it? Carol?
Oh, I just wanted to mention too, we had Stan look at, out of that 3.31% increase, what percentage of that was health insurance? And it was like 30% if I remember the number.
Well, it was about, it was about 0.8 of a percentage point. So close to 30% of that increase is just due to healthcare and that is completely out of our hands.
Yeah.
So, yeah, when you look at that overall expenditure increase, that 3.32, subtract a 0.8 out of there. And then you've got our increase not due to healthcare. Yeah, good point. So we talked a little bit at Finance Meeting about bringing these numbers to you because we felt it was important to get a read on where the board was with this budget. We are likely to bring it to you early January to be approved. I think that's prudent because we'll have just a little bit more time to get just a little bit more information and get a little closer to accurate numbers. But we want to hear from you today. If we show you these numbers, do you go, wow, those are crazy? Or, hey, this looks reasonable. Let's, let's keep looking at this and talk in January. And to field any questions for the folks who were not part of the process on the Finance Committee, because there were a lot of really great conversations we had and probably a lot of questions you have.
And when does this have to be approved by to get to?
Mid-January.
Mid-January.
Mid-January. Yeah. It's got to be before then to have enough time to get it warned and out for annual meeting in February, Town Meeting Day in March. There are statutory requirements where it's like between, there's a 10-day window between 40 and 30 days before your annual meeting, you have to have it. Good question. Yeah. How long can we wait before we finalize it? Really, early January is it?
One of the other, you know, because there's what's happening on the state level and there's what's happening at our level. And like generally, as a district, you've usually just been right in the middle of funding and just like generally like percentage of our tax rates going up and down. The caveat for this year is like the commission for this, that the state asked to, to start doing research and come out with some short-term goals and then long-term goals. I, they just punted the short-term goals. So another one of those asterisks, which we won't know in January, we might not know, we probably won't know by, you know, Town Meeting Day, is how much surplus did, did they want to use? Last year, you, they wanted to do the whole surplus. Like, that affects the tax rate. Are they actually going to make any changes for the short term without any recommendations? That could change things. So I think there's going to be a state narrative and then there's going to be a district narrative. And, you know, it's going to be hard to communicate that, that there is different things happening in our district than necessarily what's happening on the state. And that'll be our job of communicating that.
I'm just looking at the surplus, and I don't want to jump ahead if, the surplus building fund strategy.
I have that ready to go, but can we pause and just make sure we don't have any other questions on budget?
Yeah.
How we got to that increase, the 3.32 overall expenditure, the about 5% per student and where our tax rates are projected at? Any questions how we got there or what's in there or what's not in there? Okay. Go, go for it, Lynn, and I'll put that up because I had that ready. That was another thing that we talked about. And Finance Committee has looked at this three-year plan and how are we going to take the surplus that we have and how are we going to spread it out to have a reasonably, reasonably consistent tax rate? So, gosh, we've got surplus, we could use it all this year and then it wouldn't be there next year and the tax rate would jump up. So we don't necessarily want to do that. But we also see that the State House is really seriously looking at affordability. And if they do something in the next two years, you know, we probably don't want a surplus two years from now. We had been talking last year and the year before, how do we move away from collecting tax dollars and not spending them? That doesn't seem to make sense. Why are we collecting it if we don't need it? We've had some circumstances with COVID where we've been unable to fill positions. So there have been some places where we didn't, we didn't intend for that to happen, but it happened. And now we have a surplus. I think another thing we tried to do was whenever there were federal grant dollars, we tried really hard to pull those federal grant dollars in and it was the local funds that we saved. So part of what is helping us this year have those tax rates projected that we saw is a million dollars in surplus. We can do that again next year and we can come close to doing that again in a third year if we have to. We're hopeful that things are going to change before then. But part of the, part of landing on that number was what our tax rate looked like using that million dollars in surplus, but also thinking about a year after and a year after. You know, would we be doing something that is going to cause a huge jump in FY '27? Or are we trying to keep the ship steady for the next few years, hoping that the state is going to make some positive changes? That is something we want to get folks feedback on too. We could use more surplus and have a lower tax rate. We could use fewer dollars of surplus and the tax rate would go up a little bit. The other piece of that is what do we want to keep doing with our building fund? We can put, we can, if. We can put, we can, if we follow this three-year plan, we can put $300,000 into our building fund. And that, beginning of the year, we were projecting 200,000. Things are looking a little bit better, so we can do it for three years and we can have a pretty decent plan so long as things change by FY '29. So more surplus, fewer surplus dollars, more into the building fund, fewer into the building fund?
Well, and I guess that's where I was going because I know the Buildings and Grounds Committee has been doing a ton of work. Developing the five-year plan and trying to figure out priorities. And I really think, this is just my opinion, but I really think it's important that we put that money into Buildings and Grounds because much of that, if you don't.
Costs more later.
My house, if I don't fix it now, it's going to cost me more next year. So I just think, I think that's wise and I appreciate the fact that the Buildings and Grounds Committee have looked at that and with Gary, oh, not Gary anymore, sorry.
Tim.
Tim. Have developed a plan and have set priorities. And there's some things that need.
Two of which we're going to see tonight?
Yeah.
And I think the other thing that we talked about with that Buildings Fund is our actual ability to spend the money fast enough. Because if we put it in there and then don't spend it, there could be problems down the road if you don't spend it within a certain amount of years.
And the state is kind of hinting at, there may come a time where the state says, you can't carry surplus anymore. Give it back.
I was just going to allude to that. So depending upon how much we carry, whether it be carrying it from '26 to '28, or how much we put into the Building Sinking Fund, how much we put in now and camp a lot to project because we can't get contractors or we can't get them done timely. The state is seeing that as excess taxpayers' money, which it is, and they're going to say, you need to return it.
And I think this year is not the decision year to go, oh, put it all in the Building Fund. You know, save it, put it all in the Building Fund. I think next year is the year to really look at decisions that are made over the summer. We're going to have some lead time and I think next year, if we had to, we could make a move like that. I think this year it would be a little, we'd be putting the cart before the horse a little bit if we did that now.
Because if you.
But at least we're talking about it now.
Because if you rewind nine-ish months ago, that wasn't a three-year schedule, it was a five-year schedule.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yep, yep, yep.
And I think to the point of that change, I think the uncertainty of what the state is going to do is probably the biggest.
Yeah.
And the other part of it is, is we shouldn't have a surplus that is so high.
Yeah, we shouldn't.
Right. And so there's two things, but you don't want that cliff to all happen at once. You still have to walk it out a little bit.
You know, and if folks are comfortable with the numbers that are up there for this year and the budget implications and the tax rate implications and the State House does something absolutely unexpected this spring, we can take FY '27 and FY '28 and squeeze it into a four-year plan again. We can, you know, so that's why I still, I think this year, let's, let's be a little more conservative and see what happens because now more than ever, it seems like the State House might do something. So let's, you know, not count our eggs before they hatch, but let's have some ideas in place so that we're ready to see.
Flexibility.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And we can, we can vote for the, we can do the wording when we do the budget as well.
Yes, we can do that in January. But curious to hear from folks if it seems like this is reasonable. Yeah, bring it back in January, just update us. You know, that's what we kind of want to hear tonight.
And our plan for, and we'll talk about it, and our plan for this wording is to do what we did on the last, where we were saying, take it from.
Current.
Current.
Right.
Because then they have access.
Spend it faster.
They can spend it faster. So if we get a contract lined up for any work, we can just use it.
Tim could be doing a project over the summer with this money that gets voted on Town Meeting Day, which is great. If we do, if we use that language of current surplus, not unanticipated. We have the current surplus to cover it, so we can use that wording. We did that the last two years, I think. So, and that's just given us more flexibility.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think we're all content anymore, any more?
I just want to thank the Budget, Finance Committee and Buildings and Grounds. I've sat in on those meetings and man, that's a lot of work. And Stan, had you brought in as well?
Oh, and I am so sorry, I should have said Stan is horribly, horribly ill. That's the reason he's not here. It's not because he doesn't want to talk, but he's really ill, so.
Yeah.
He usually likes to talk.
But I really appreciate the hard work that folks have done.
Yeah, and I think Stephen has done a great job.
Absolutely.
And communicating and working with Brian and Stan. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, Stephen has taken the reins as Finance Chair and learned from some of the best of them and started carrying that forward, which is awesome. That's a, that's a committee chair position that you need somebody engaged and Stephen has stepped up.
Do we have a laminated sheet to take?
I'm going to have awards for our biggest fans and a golden spreadsheet.
So then we're going to move on to tuition rates.
Tuition rate, yeah. And that is, Stan gave an update on that too. Let me pull that up real fast. So this we do want to do tonight because the deadline for this is a little sooner in January. This isn't going to change. Even if we see some fluctuations in numbers, this tuition rate is not going to change. So we would ask the board, we have enough information on our budget and our tax rates and all that fun stuff, that we would ask the board tonight to approve the following tuition rates. As you can see, the elementary tuition rate is increased $1,000 from last year. The high school tuition rate has increased $1,250 from last year.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second? All right, now we can talk about it. So this tuition is when a student is going to another school.
Yep.
And so then that money gets paid to us. So it's the opposite of following.
Yeah, this is, this is what we can charge if we have somebody attending and they need to figure those rates out.
How many students is that approximately?
Approximately, we have maybe 60, 70 tuition students at the high school right now, yeah.
Quite a few.
So those are students from another district coming here.
Largely Ludlow, Mount Holly area, because when they closed down a high school out that direction, we had a lot of students come that way. We have a lot of Middletown kids that come up too and that helps, so.
And is it roughly a net-ish wash or there's slightly more than there is?
Oh, kids we have going out paying tuition, that doesn't happen often. That doesn't happen often because we have schools for our towns, so our resident students attend those schools. So we have no provision, if a student wants to go elsewhere, they can go elsewhere, but tuition dollars don't necessarily follow them.
And even school choice?
Yeah, school choice and high school, dollars don't follow students for high school choice. So if you have a few students in from Rutland City and a few students out from Rutland City, doesn't change our financials at all. Tuition kids are separate from those high school choice kids, yeah. Tuition kids are ones where there is no high school, so we're going to go somewhere. The tuition dollars have to follow those kids. Good, good question.
Where do they get those dollars from? Is that out of pocket for the family?
So, so if you think about Middletown, Middletown is going to have a tax rate and they're going to collect those through part of the property taxes and when a Middletown kid comes to us, those tax dollars that are collected from those residents are going to follow that resident student to us.
So the student's family is not paying that?
The town is paying.
It's out of the town's budget.
So, and if you think about it, all of our towns fund our high school. That's a town that doesn't have a high school, so they've collected the dollars, they haven't used them to open and run a school, so they send them to the place that has.
So it's coming from the town?
Yes, 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 yes. Yeah, no, good questions.
All right. Where do these like numbers come from exactly? Like do we have recommendations?
So these numbers really come from what it, what it costs us to educate a student, if that makes sense, so.
Are they on par with, like, do you compare to other districts?
I would say we tend to be middle of the pack. We tend, and when you look at our student spending, per student spending, we tend to be a little below average, actually. So when you look at this, like how much ed spending per student, this 13, I know it's not highlighting up there very well, this 13, 570 for next year, that is below the state average and we tend to track below the state average.
Which if I remember and I'm going from memory, was around 15.
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
For middle.
Yeah. So our tuition is based on, you know, what we spend per student, so we can't, we can't necessarily just make up a crazy number. If we're too high or too low, there are provisions for how, you know, at the end of the year, when we do our accounting, that we may owe or, if that makes sense.
Right, because the state looks at it, right?
Yeah, so would this be like part of an audit in some ways or would they look at?
It's, in a way, yes. The state does that accounting themselves. So they're going to, at the end of the year, let us know, hey, you charged too little or you charged too much. Because these are projections and we have some wiggle room, so, you know, we don't have to be exact because things can change between, you know, the statutory deadline to adopt this in January and what actually plays out with our budget. So we make our best guess at getting as close as possible to what it should be and we're usually okay. But if we're not, the state will account for that later. Stan had mentioned at the last finance meeting that the state was actually telling us, hey, we think you undercharged last year, so we're doing some of that work with the state to figure out if we do need to collect more money from some tuition towns. That's, we're in, we're in the figuring that out period, so.
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, no, good, good question. We don't just get to say, ah, let's charge this much.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. So all those in favor of improving this tuition rate?
Good, great everybody.
All right, so the next thing is committee reports, personnel.
I don't think we have anything. We do not have a meeting at this point scheduled in January, but depending upon where we go with the superintendent search, that may change. The other thing is. Don't, that's it, I'll be quiet.
Okay.
It's your time to shine.
Bear with me momentarily. Well, no, it didn't yield the results I wanted. So we had a meeting. We had a nice discussion on cell phone policy. We sent a survey out to the staff and administrators at all of the schools. Thank you for everyone that participated. The data was very useful in my opinion. I appreciated it, very thoughtful. It looks like we will be doing another survey to the community will be our next step on gaining feedback and understanding what we want to do with cell phones. And now I bring for the board two policies for first read, I'll bundle those two. H8, which is the Title I comparability, and D1, which is class size. I'll look for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
Beautiful. Any discussion on either of those? No? All those in favor? Oh, unanimous, thank you. And then, like we discussed earlier, whoa, everyone wasn't here. So not like we discussed earlier, when the VSB A makes a recommendation to rescind a policy, our policy committee reviews that recommendation and we traditionally follow that. So I'm making a motion that we rescind policy D3, staffing and job descriptions. And I would make that a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
What's the scoop on that? Can you give me the?
So the policy itself, says the board, will grant the superintendent the ability to create job descriptions. And then those job descriptions come back to us through, for approval through.
Policy or personnel.
Through personnel. So it's like a vicious cycle. So we have a policy that just ends up taking its natural course. So there's no need for it.
One of the things is, and I think it's important to say, that policy came about as a result of some concerns that the board wasn't exerting enough control over personnel. And, you know, the, the School Board Association is, you know, they were like, what?
And we have, I think, a really good practice of when there are personnel shifts, we talk and we bring it to personnel to have that conversation. Like if we've got a position and we're going to slightly change the job description, we want that to be transparent.
I think we're in a much better position in terms of the relationship between personnel and the superintendent than we were in the past when the Personnel Committee didn't really exist.
Bear.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And my last policy of the evening is a second read. So we've already done a first, this is the second, just based on the timing with the Herald and things of that nation. So this is D6, substitute teachers for second read, and I would make that a motion.
One second.
Second. Any discussion? No discussion, so all those in favor? Beautiful, thank you. I believe our next meeting is scheduled for January 7th at 5:30.
I have the, okay, I have the 14th.
14th, I would love the 14th.
Okay. But I think that could just be like a recurring meeting I had, but for 5:30.
5:30.
Okay.
And that looks like it's.
What's the date on that?
January 14th, it's a Tuesday.
Okay. Buildings and ground, that's me again. So prior to this meeting, I shared all of the information that I've collected surrounding the Wallingford Gate. Hopefully everyone's had time to digest that and I would open the floor for discussion.
So as it stands, the gate is locked.
As it stands now, the gate is locked.
But the principal has.
By the neighbor.
By the neighbor.
Is it still? Tim, Tim was reaching out to the neighbor to switch to our lock after the last board meeting, so.
Correct.
That was in the works, based on what folks had said at that point.
So imminently, it will be locked, but it, the principal.
And we'll have the keys.
So conceivably, if there was an injury or a catastrophe and that gate was needed by emergency vehicles and the principal was busy dealing with, you know, just sort of a chaotic situation, how would they open the gate?
We had discussed folks having access to that key so that it's not just one person having a key. Good luck that, you know, custodial would have the keys, people who do recess duty would have the keys, so that they would know how to do that if needed. Because if it being our lock doesn't do us any good if nobody has the key.
Yeah, just in a chaotic situations, trying to find a key doesn't.
Well, I would back up a step and let's drill down on why, why do we have a lock there? Like what's the real reason that we have a lock on that gate? The neighbor put it on there because they had their concerns, but from the school's interest, why do we have a lock on that gate?
Well, I think I'm piggybacking on what I'm, well, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, can't we just take the lock off in the morning when the school custodian gets there, take the lock off and after all the kids leave, if the custodian's still there, I don't know yet, after-school program? Because the neighbor, from what I heard, was concerned because she said people are cutting through her backyard to get to the playground. Now, I don't know if that's true.
We could ask, we could ask if the neighbor.
I mean, that's what, that's one of the comments that was made on it. So I'm like looking for, you know, compromise here.
We could ask.
I personally am not in favor of that. I feel that, first of all, it could be forgotten to unlock it first thing in the morning. I feel that having a lock on that gate just puts people in danger unnecessarily. I forgot the last point that you made, but I feel that, it's really important.
Well, just to compromise was my last point, you know, so she's happy because, you know, when the school's not in session, you know.
Right, well, my other point is if somebody's going across her line, it's not. Right, well, my other point is, if somebody's going across her lawn, it's not school children, then, if it's school children, she should notify the school if there's not an emergency going on at the school.
Right.
And let them know. If it's not school children, then that's her private property for her to tell people not to go on her property. That's her job, to say, you're trespassing on my property, or call the police, whatever you need to do. I don't think that that's the school's responsibility to keep her property free of trespassers. I mean, I, if I had a trespasser on my property, I wouldn't come to the school and say, take care of that for me, or whatever. Um, it's up to her to take care of trespassers on her property. Um, and I'm just really worried, I just feel like, you know, why would we limit the number of ways that people can get to safety in the event of an emergency? Whether it's in a plan or not in a plan, I feel like, when something really bad happens, a lot of times, I think plans go out the window, and you just are gonna do what you need to do, to get yourself safe. That's what I feel.
Is, has it been clarified whose property the fence is on?
Yes, somebody clarified that.
Uh, officially, no. Officially, no.
I think Gary offered, though, that...
Gary said that somebody gave him a piece of information that could clarify.
From the town clerk office, that said there's an easement on the fence.
We are not privy to that.
Well, if we...
If we take this lock off, I mean, she can throw up a fence on the other side of this gate.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I, I don't, uh, I don't know that we should be trying to dissect what the emergency plans are for a school. I think there's probably...
We're not privy to them anyways.
Right.
Right. I, I think there's something to be said for, somebody brought up in one of these earlier conversations, that having, the, i- i- if we have, I mean, y- you don't necessarily want egress in every direction. If you have an emergency, you do want to try and keep it controlled and contained, and you want to know where all your students are, et cetera. And so if they have a plan that it's in place for that, that, I feel like we should trust the plan, and not that they're gonna just throw an audible, and, oh, actually, we're gonna go this way. Instead, I feel like that could create chaos in an, in an emergency situation that you wouldn't want to add. That all being said, I do have the question of, did they create the plan without that being an egress, when they just assumed, that's not an egress, that's open to us, so they created the plan they created? So, some review of, of the plan, and, and if, if we didn't have that gate there, or that fence there, would we make a different plan? Right, so just, I don't know if we, if we want to have people review the plan, or just the next time it's up for renewal or review to consider, let's pretend that the gate isn't, isn't in play.
We can ask folks to have that conversation.
An obstacle, right?
Yeah, my, my understanding was that, I think they did a little work of talking to folks to say, like, hey, how do folks feel about the playground and, and the lock, informally, just checking with people, and there didn't seem to be huge concerns from the staffing end of, you know, that's gonna be a problem, we need to fix it. I, I would think that if folks had a concern about it, they would have brought it up when they reviewed those plans as a staff, but we can absolutely, next time we review that with staff, you know, check in and see how they feel about it.
No, I'm not comfortable with that. As a board member, if I'm putting my stamp on that, saying I'm okay with that gate being locked, I don't feel good about that. I can't feel good putting kid, in, kids in harm's way, or in, or limiting the amount of ways that they can get off that playground in an emergency. I just don't feel right about that.
Is there other ways for them to get off that playground, like...
On the west side, there is not, because erroneously, last time, it was stated that you could go a hundred feet to the north of that gate and go around that fence, you cannot. There was another fence put up between our, end of our fence and the neigh- neighboring fence, and it's also padlocked.
Okay, so I have another question. So, in, in other words, that playground is not accessible to the public once, at all, like, all the playgrounds... I mean, all the playground, like Clarendon, people go there all summer long and use the playgrounds.
Right, right, exactly, right. Well, you can get to the playground from the parking lot, from the school, but you can't get off the playground from the west side if you needed to.
Yeah, from the school, but not from, I'd have to go down there and look.
Well, you wouldn't, the public wouldn't be using that gate, if you wanted to just go, like, kick around the soccer ball.
Yeah.
You would hope that people would not be using that gate, because they'd be walking right through somebody's backyard.
That's right.
Totally trespassing to do that. I, I mean, that's one of the things that you see when you go and look at it, is that there's no reason, except potentially, in an emergency situation, for people to be using that gate. So I asked the question, surely, somebody manufactures a, like a crash bar, or some kind of device that secures the gate under normal circumstances, but, you know, has one of those signs that, if you open this gate, an alarm will sound, and has the ability to, you know, in, if you need to, hit a bar, break a, a shearpin, or whatever, and be able to get through the gate, that might ameliorate the concerns of the neighbor, but preserve the use of that gate as an egress. And then, I'd also just say that, I get what you're saying about chaos, but I also think, having looked at it, that not taking advantage of having that gate would be a big mistake. And so I, I second your point completely.
To that extent, what about a chain with, uh, a carabiner?
Sure, that you could open.
That's just, you won't...
Right.
Now it has the presence of a chain, oh, you can't go there, but it's freely opened.
I think a sign could take care of that, too. Emergency only.
Yeah, and these are elementary students, they're gonna follow directions by and large. All right, I've never been a teacher.
No, 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 no. But one of the things I do want to say, and I think it's important, is, more and more, when you're talking about emergency situations in schools, it's not about lining up and going out this door and moving in that direction. In fact, it's become more and more, get the heck out.
However you can.
The nearest door, and go, and go, just, just go. And, you know, teachers now are given the opportunity to work with their kids to say, okay, if there's something going on down in the gym, then we book.
Right.
We go out the back door, okay? That, that's the way it is now. It's not like, it was where we line up and, and we go out this door. It's not like a fire drill. And in fact, teachers are encouraged to share with their kids, you get out that door.
Run.
Don't look back.
And go. So, I, I think, in my mind, any way we can provide students and staff, it's not, it's, it's the kids and the adults to, to, to go. Let's just go. I mean, that's changed over the last couple of years, it really has, last few years, I guess. Um, it, it's different now, it really is. I mean, they used to, we used to go out of the building, you go out this way, we meet here, which...
Well, the fire drill model doesn't work.
No.
Or the scenario that we are all talking about.
They're all dancing around.
Yeah.
Nick, can you explain, when you said, like, we're not privy to the emergency operations plans, what does that mean? Because I was just looking, so we have a fire and emergency preparedness drill policy, and it talks about, well, yeah, I just was curious, what that means? Like, we're not privy to it?
We, we don't make those public, because if they were public, it would be problematic, because the person coming to do something would know where we were gonna go.
But the board, it sounds like the board can look at it.
Uh, there, the, folks can, folks can make requests, and we will, we will determine whether you need to know those plans or not. And I think that's just, we have to have procedure and protocol in place, that we don't just, you know, distribute it to the school board to distribute it to the school board. I mean, if there's a reason to ask, great, we'll have that conversation. But we don't, by default, just provide that. You know, we actually keep those pretty darn close.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Yeah, so I just, I guess I was curious with the, the gate then, we don't know what is in the, their emergency operations plan right now regarding the gate. But we just know that it's locked. I just want to, I'm just trying to understand.
We only know by talking to the West, Wallingford principal.
Okay.
That it is not in the plans.
It's not a factor.
That it's not in the...
And, and I, I would...
But we feel like it should be.
I would wonder, do we want the school board reviewing plans and updating and revising and changing plans, or do we want the people who are writing those plans to continue to write those plans, and be trained with state-level trainings, and, you know, that sort of thing?
Yeah, because those plans are written with input from emergency management people and stuff like that.
And we use the state's template to write those, and part of the requirement is to try and liaison with those local organizations, to make sure that, that we are not leaving things out, or not thinking through things that they might bring to the table.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm trying to get clarity on, then, is like, what is the board's role with this?
To make sure that we have things in place where we are doing our due diligence to have those plans. I think if you look at, you know, V S B A has some good resources there that outline, you know, what is the board's role, what is our role?
Um, I think we are not suggesting, I don't think anybody here is suggesting, that we should be reviewing individual security plans for schools. That clearly is not our job. To me, this is a different situation. A specific issue has been brought to us by this gentleman here. And something, in my view, it is a pretty straightforward question, and I don't see how adding an egress point affects a security plan in any way, except for adding one more possibility for kids to get out.
One more option.
One more option. I think it's really simple, like that. As long as there's no legal impediment, like, turns out the fence was built on the neighbor's property, or, you know, something like that.
The problem is, there could be, and, and I know Gary is saying he's been given information that states otherwise, we don't have that yet, and, you know, we reach out to our insurance company, we talk to Visbit, and, and when we were talking with the person at Visbit, you know, he, he had kind of a similar thing to say to what you were saying, Lynn, is, we're not gonna line the kids up to go out that gate. That's the last thing you're gonna do, because then you have a line of kids all waiting to go through the gate, you're gonna go any direction you can.
Right, but you also told me that, that Visbit said we could take the lock off.
Visbit said we could leave it and be safe.
Right, and he also said we could take it off.
Or we could take it off and be safe.
And what I would prefer is that we make a decision tonight and not delay this any further. Spence said September, and I'm like...
They told us that we were, uh, our risk management was absolutely reasonable, and we were not taking on liability by leaving it locked. We do worry about the financial implications of, if that, if it comes to pass, that the neighbor gets really upset and wants to go to the zoning commission, planning commission...
And I think that's her right, and she should, that's up to her to be able to do that. But I also feel like, what's the value of a child's life? What's the value of a child's life? Could she live with that? I can't.
Pat, I don't think anybody here wants a kid to get harmed.
Then let's unlock that gate.
So, can I, my comment is, one, I think I'm all, I'm generally gonna defer, right, because I, I don't necessarily think that specifics are, are our job. I think a compromise, and, you know, adding a lock of ours, or whatever, but my, my worry would be, if we open the gate, I don't know this person, we say, we're gonna just have it open, is they put up a fence. So, having something that is slightly more challenging than just having an open gate, where you actually have to do something, seems to make sense, because then, maybe that people don't go. Because we, if we change, and they just put up a fence, then we lose it entirely. Right, and, and I'm not, you know, I, and I'm, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, they can't put up a fence one foot away from, there's set...
Right, they can go...
It's also really expensive, like, thousands of dollars to put up a fence.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you can brain out possible scenarios where this goes south till you're blue in the face.
Yeah.
There's a lock on an exit gate that could be useful if there was a school shooter. That's the crux of the matter. And that gate should be unlocked. That's my view.
That's why it was put there. And the other thing is, zoning was not a thing in Wallingford, back when this fence was put up there, so it has to, I'm pretty sure it's grandfathered in. I mean, even the zoning administrator, I think, mentioned that.
I have a question, which is, when you have buildings that are close together, you know how there's, there's fire escapes with, and it's illegal to block them or lock them? I don't think the person on the other side of that, that way to get out of the building can block that. I mean, you know, there's properties that are very close together, like...
I think none of us are experts at that level.
I was just trying to say, I don't think you're allowed to just lock...
Right, and so I don't think we can, we're not able to do that. And I, I...
So, bottom line, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get to the crux of it, is, the only reason it's locked is because of the neighbor.
Right.
It's her lock.
Yep. So, other than that, I'm trying to come up with a reason why that should be locked.
Right.
I mean, if we don't think it should exist, let's just take the gate out and put up chain link, I mean, really, and just finish it off.
Yeah, because it's an attractive nuisance.
And, and I don't think that's a good idea, so...
I think the primary reason it's locked, you're right, is because the neighbor is concerned about...
And I don't think that's our concern, I agree with Pat. If she has a problem with that, she needs to deal with the town on that. If she wants to go to the zoning board and make an issue of the fact that there's an egress onto her property, she can go to the town and make that issue.
We just want to be mindful of, we don't want to get in a scenario where we're spending many, many dollars to move a fence.
Oh, we wouldn't spend it, she would spend it, and the town would spend it.
Uh, I, you know, I don't know that we know that, and that's...
Well, I was, I'm on, I was on the Board of Adjustment in Clarendon, so I know a little bit about zoning, but, um, I, I just can't see a reason why...
I guess, I guess maybe where we are right now, is if someone wants to make a motion, make a motion, and then we will vote on it, and then we will have the...
I'll make a motion that the gate remain unlocked.
I'll second it.
All right, so, is there any more discussion?
That it remain unlocked?
So that...
Would that it be unlocked? Is that Carol's...
And not lock.
Because it currently is locked, so it can't remain, or it's currently locked, so it can't remain unlocked.
And remind me, sorry, I know, I think we talked about this, but is, is the neighbor willing to unlock it?
No.
No.
To have it be completely unlocked, no.
Okay, so we would just go and break the lock? Is the action that would be taken?
I mean, right. And we would be doing, and, and to clarify, is, we have asked, you know, the administration what their view is, and this would be us telling the administration something different.
The administration's recommendation, from all levels, is that they own the lock.
Where they, that, right.
If we are locked on the gate.
It is, it remains locked.
They've spoken to the neighbor, and the neighbor said, as long as the gate remains closed, they are amenable to leaving the gate locked.
So, sorry, am I out of order talking?
No, we're in discussion.
Okay, so, what's wrong with having, like, you know, if you pull a fire alarm, and you get ink on you, you know, there's a way that you're, so that people can't just pull the fire alarm. Why can't there be a mechanism on the gate, similar to that, that if somebody opens it, like a buzzer goes off, they have it in restaurants, or they, they get ink on their hands? The point is, it's shut, but it can be pushed open.
I think...
I don't think that's hard to do.
But we start looking at the cost of that, and looking at other priorities that we would much rather take on than, you know, wiring, wiring something out to the gate. And that just seems like we're going way, way, way beyond reasonable, and spending money where we don't need to spend money.
I mean, I hear you, I would like to say this, I believe that having a gate with a lock, that cannot be opened by a child, is an attractive nuisance. Because, just like Carol said, if there's not, if there's, gate's locked and a child can't go through it, get rid of the gate and put up a fence. Because now what it's telling a child...
We could do that reasonably.
What, what it's telling a child is, there's a gate here, but you can't use it. So people, which is, I mean, that's, like, the worst of both worlds. So if you don't want people to be able to use it, get rid of it.
It's discussion, so even...
I propose an amendment to Carol's motion, which is to give the owner of the lock a certain amount of time, forty-eight hours to remove it, and if she doesn't, we will remove it.
I'd like to propose another amendment, in addition to...
I don't know if we do amend, I don't know how amendments are, you might have to rescind...
And we will leave it unlocked at that point. Let's see where they go.
It's above my pay grade, I'm only acting. It's above my pay grade. I'm only acting.
You're doing good.
What's your amendment?
Simply put an emergency exit only sign on the inside of the gate. I know we're getting into the weeds here, but this is that kind of a question.
Can we just, can we go clean slate? Can we rescind whoever did the second, rescind the second?
You did the second.
And then give a clean motion?
Okay, I take back my second.
Okay. Can you rescind yours?
I rescind my motion.
Or whatever that wording is. So now you're...
What is the motion now? I just, I don't, I think that, I don't see a reason for a lock on that gate. That's, so I make a motion that the board recommend or, or what are we doing?
I don't think we're recommending, right?
We're demanding.
We're saying that the administrat, so in this motion, you're saying, so...
Be it school administration removes the lock or notifies the neighbor that the lock will be removed and she has 48 hours, as Pat said, to remove it or it will be bolt cutters.
And an emergency exit sign will be placed on the gate.
On the inside of the gate.
All right. Now we need a second for that.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Hey, we're back in discussion.
Well, I heard a good reason for it to be locked. I would say fine. And I don't zero one.
Yeah, right. I mean, it's basically, I mean, it's just whether or not you want the administration to be making this type of decision or not. That's kind of what we're voting on.
We're voting on the administration?
Well, I don't actually agree with that.
You don't think so?
No, because generally, we don't do that.
Exactly.
Yeah. However, an issue has been brought to our attention.
Right.
And we can't just pretend that we don't know about it.
Right. That's, that's fine. And the administration, at all level, from the school level to the district level.
And if there's anything else you want us to explore, like Carol had a recommendation of locking it off hours and checking with the neighbor, we're more than willing to explore anything. We've not said no to exploring anything.
I don't think we need to ask the neighbor. I mean, the, the school, the school's job is to make sure that the kids have are safe, not to appease neighbors, I mean, within reason.
Yeah. We, we have tried to do our due diligence to explore the safety risks there. And that's part of reaching out to our insurance company, who I will tell you, we have reached out to Visbit before and asked them, "Hey, can we do this?" And they go, "No way." There are lots of things they tell us, "No, you can't do that." This was something that they said, "You can keep it locked." And so...
Or keep it unlocked.
You know, yeah, absolutely. So we do see some value in preserving our relationships with our neighbors. And we also see some value in trying to work together to come up with solutions, you know, that support everybody. We also see the value in not going too quickly down the road of incurring costs that may very well not be there. But we don't know that yet.
Well, I mean, I think whoever communicates this to the neighbor needs to say, "If there is a problem, please let us know. If there's a problem with people going on your property after school hours and using the gate, then you need to call..."
And we...
The police.
We don't mind, we don't mind going to the planning commission with the neighbor to bring the case to them. I mean, that, I mean, we have no, or the zoning board, whatever it is in Wallingford, you know, we don't mind doing that.
All right. I think we're walking in circles now. So...
You're right.
Let's, I'm going to call for votes. So all those in favor, say aye, raise your hands.
Is it a tie?
No, the ayes will have it.
Yeah.
So I will say five, there, all those opposed? All right?
I'm just going to abstain.
You're abstaining. The ayes have it. So you have your request, or not request, I guess. You have your...
However, if the neighbor, I'm, this is just, I'm going to say this. If the neighbor is having big problems, tell her to come back to the board and tell us. I would love to know.
This is an open board meeting.
Okay.
We, we have two, we have two more items.
Is this, is, so we have, we have two bids for...
Shrewsbury Heat and Wallingford Outbuilding.
Yeah, I'm at the Wallingford Outbuilding.
Start with that one, okay.
Lovely.
We can do that.
So, based on Tim's recommendation, I would like to make a motion that we take Fabian Earth moving because there were, quote, "Includes the finish work and reseating." So that would be 17, 400. I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Beautiful.
Get rid of that.
Be gone.
Be gone.
Okay, so now we're on to the Shrewsbury, which has been a long time coming. And this is an all-encompassing electrical work, the HVAC work, and the control work. And unfortunately, I don't have a total for you. I could sum that up.
It's up in the top. 176,7497.
Thank you so much. I would make, I would make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Got to keep the kiddos warm.
Right.
And again, this one has been looming for a long time because contractors are very slow to reply. And Tim has been nagging them like a sore tooth.
Yep.
Right. And it's the same idea that he's general managing it, just like we did the Tim project.
Like Tim's project, yeah, absolutely.
Just to get over one of those hurdles. And again, this is for rooms, like the school rooms, not the auxiliary spaces. That's another heating system that exists.
And this is estimated, Brian, you mentioned last meeting, like this sort of, we're hoping to have this done by, like the actual work done by the next...
End of summer at the latest, yeah, absolutely.
What, at the latest?
Summer.
End of summer at the latest, yeah.
Because there's these children in the school most of the time.
Yeah. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much. B and G at the moment does not have a next meeting scheduled because of all of the holidays, which means our next one would either be the last Monday or Tuesday in January. And I haven't had a chance to catch up with Tim because he's been out sick. Next committee.
Is community engagement.
Okay, I'm going to go quick. We had, we actually had a nice turnout for our discussion about the 50th anniversary during community conversations that went well. We're going to continue with in January. And the only other item that we talked about was looking at the policy for community engagement. But not with any real need to do that immediately, but we're going to add that to our workload. That's it. And our next meeting will be before the support meeting of the month.
Well, what, what date is that then?
January 15th, tentatively.
But we don't have one on the...
We don't have a schedule at the beginning.
Okay.
Yeah. We need to talk about our turn agenda building.
So it's actually the only board meeting in January?
Yeah, at this time.
Yep.
At this time.
Okay, so that's all for community engagement?
Yeah, we, we don't have a lot to...
Okay. Negotiations. We have started meeting with the support staff and we will meet with them again in January. And that's it for...
21st? Yes, that is right.
At...
3:30.
3:30.
3:30.
Here. But again, that's not a warned meeting.
No.
All right, that's it for negotiations. Finance?
Finance, I think we've pretty much covered everything earlier in the meeting. One thing that was a kind of a question out of the last meeting, it sounds like, Brian, we didn't get any necessary, changes unnecessary, that the tax projections looked pretty low and lots of people thought they were pretty low.
Yeah, that's that.
If it shakes out, it's January.
Yeah, that's that prediction that in the spring, things might look about 2% different than the numbers that anybody is actually working with now. Okay, yeah. So we are a little bit less concerned because we were concerned that some of the calculations we had might not be accurate. The calculations are fine. So we've confirmed that piece. We do think the yield number is going to be adjusted more than typical in the spring, though.
Okay. Good to know. And I heard no questions for Brian in that section. So I think that means everyone's going to feel great about showing up at town meeting days, hopefully, and being able to answer questions from the community members on that. I think we should all work between now and town meeting day to be able to do that. You're not required to be there as a board member, but people show up and ask, you know, their select, select board, a lot of questions, and then there's no one from the school.
That's our homework between now and then, is to become conversant.
Yeah. So any specific questions you might have, shoot those things to me. I'll try and make some kind of like little bulleted handout or something for us to have there, but...
Right. And to clarify, and you're just educating people, you're not telling them how to vote.
Right.
But if somebody comes to you and says...
You're just telling them to vote and information.
You know, I heard we're going to have a 17% increase in our town, you know, that, you're going to get questions like that. And you're going to get questions that you don't know the answers to as well.
And right now, the state average, they're saying it's going to be 5.6, right, or 6.?
1.
Yeah, something like that. That's not what we're projecting yet. So if people are saying, "Oh, are we going to have a 6% increase?" No. Good, good to be thinking about.
Excellent. So we've got payroll warrants. Payroll warrants for 12/18, or for December 6th in the amount of 623,238.65 cents. From December 13th in the amount of 86,343.78 cents. On December 16th in the amount of 7,454.73 cents for a total of 717,037.16 cents. Do we have a motion to accept these payroll warrants?
I'll accept.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Excellent. And payable warrants. We have general fund in the amount of 389,572.78 cents. General fund for 9,291.98 cents. ASP in the amount of 11,818.75 cents. And lunch in the amount of 60,412.50 cents for a total of 471,096.1 cent. Do we have a motion to accept these warrants?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Do you want to do student activities, too, at the same time?
Bundle them up? Okay, so student activities to bundle them in. We have from Mill River in the amount of 6,627.46 cents. From Clarendon with 790.56 cents. From Shrewsbury with 1,831.75 cents. None from Tinmouth and from Wallingford, 2,838 for a total of 12,087.77 cents. Do we need another motion for that?
I don't think so. It was included.
Discussion, I just have one question because it was a big number. And I just wanted to look at our check registers here. The big piece on here is the VHI health program?
Yeah.
What is, what, this is, what exactly is this big?
So what was that exactly? VHI would be our healthcare plans.
Okay, so that's, that, that 300,000 is what our healthcare looks like.
It's on the district's end, probably, but I could look more closely if you want me to. If it's VHI, it's going to be something like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. All in favor? Great. We do not have a scheduled board meeting. Do we, we believe we need one before the next full board meeting?
If, if what we heard tonight was largely that folks are on board with where we are with proposed budget, great. We'll bring it back in January with updated numbers, and I don't see a need to meet. Stan will do those numbers, so...
That sounds great. If folks have any specific questions they have about questions that might come up in a public setting or something like that, shoot them to me so I can start putting together a list of points we might want to have. I do think, personally, I think the most important one is the budget summary sheet and looking at those with the additions to budget and the budget cuts and reductions. I think those are good points to think about what sort of narrative we have around that, that we are focusing on math. We already have reading interventionists. We're focusing now on math and trying to, you know, create some more opportunity there, as well as some of these other pieces of turning a nurse aide position, kind of leveling it up to a registered nurse, nurse position. Those are some things that our community, the community should know about.
I think the man interventionist piece is important to let folks know that that's what we heard from the community.
Yeah.
You know, so it's not something we just made up.
Yeah. And where, and I think the way that we're trying to think of it, it was recommended that the kind of biggest impact would be to have an interventionist at each elementary school. And that we are trying to take a more gradual approach to start with two. And if we have good success, to hopefully move up from there. I think that's all we've got. Thank you.
All right. So transactive legal business, so we have to do signing?
And actually, can I, Stephen, I'll answer your question. That VHI, I think, is a monthly cost. Because I think if you look at every month, you're going to notice that VHI. So that's a really interesting thing to think, that we pay for our health plans.
Yeah, it's just when the numbers popped out at me in a single month.
Well, that's why it's 0.8% of our input.
Yeah, increase.
Sorry, Josh.
Oh, no problem. So...
I would make a motion that Josh sign pay warrants on behalf of the chair.
Yep, great idea.
Second.
All those in favor? I'm going to sign. This is good. Is there any other legal business?
I just wanted to check on that contract with the Vermont School Board Association because we need to get that to them.
You signed it, right, Josh?
Yeah, I signed it already. And they gave me, they gave me that.
Do you want to take it with you, Lynn, or do you want me to get, make copies and email it to everybody? What do you want to do with that?
I don't know, to be honest with you.
Why don't I, why don't I scan it and send it to everybody?
Well, it needs to be sent to them.
Yeah, do you want me to send it to them? I don't want to do that. Okay, leave it with me. I'll do that first thing.
Okay.
Wait, email it to me?
Yeah, yeah. I can do that pretty darn fast.
Payment, does something need to be approved?
That would probably come...
30 days after signing the search contract. Half of it will be due. So we're okay. I just want to get them the contract that we agreed to so that we can start.
I'll, I'll get it to them first thing in the morning.
Okay, so I'll give you this. Okay.
Yeah, no good question. So we don't walk out of here and it doesn't happen, yeah.
Any other legal business? No? All right. Agenda building.
So we have an interesting calendar this year where the first Wednesday of January is January 1st. So school's not in session, and that's typically, you know, would be considered a holiday. So we had not tentatively scheduled a meeting there. It sounds like there's a need for a meeting sooner rather than later. I think the 15th, we could wait till the 15th to do budget. That would be like, you know, last opportunity to do budget. But I think Lynn was saying that there might be some search committee things that, that can be accomplished on the 8th, if we have a meeting on the 8th. My wonder is, if we do a meeting on the 8th, do you want to turn around and meet a week later on the 15th? Would, how do you want to...
Or spread it out?
Yeah, what do you want January to look like?
Because if we do, basically, it works out, right, if we only have one on the 15th, eventually you have too many somewhere else, too.
Yeah.
So, because if we do the 8th and like the 22nd, and then that, then that gives us another week before the 5th.
Right.
Yeah.
So it seems natural to be, to do the 8th.
Do we have, we don't have to make a motion, do we?
So are you saying the 8th and the 15th?
Or the 8th.
The 8th and the 22nd.
So skipping the 15th.
Yeah, 8th and 22nd.
And that still gives you a week.
Yeah, going into February.
So on the 8th...
April's got so many Wednesdays.
On the 8th, I will have for you not just the budget, but the warning, because we will want to approve the warning. So we want to adopt the budget. We want to approve the warning.
Supervision is certain.
That, I think that's going to be a pretty full meeting. And we can do whatever we were planning on the 15th on the 22nd. Is that reasonable? Okay.
Yes, because we changed the wording on...
Yeah. Okay, great. So those three things, I think, will be three reasonable sized ones, and that'll be a meeting on the 8th. Okay.
I'm going to have trouble making both of those meetings, just so folks know.
All right. So are we good with agenda building?
Everybody happy with that?
Executive session?
I'm aware of.
Then I'd like to adjourn by consensus at 9:09.